Board of Park Commissioners Board Meeting for the date of Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019, at 10:00 AM is now in session. With the record reflected, there was no executive session held, therefore no need for certification. We'll now have our roll call.
Commissioner Juanita Jackson. Commissioner Renee Patterson.
Present.
Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Here. We do have a quorum, we will proceed. We'll now have our pleasure to be.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would address your attention to the minutes from the date of January 9th, and entertain a motion for their acceptance.
As so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Juanita Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Renee Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Yes. Ratification of payroll and claims.
President Gardner, we do not have a claims list because we're at the beginning of the year and the Finance Department is still going through our purchase orders that we put in for last year and the beginning of this year.
I would have you note that the pay period reflected in this pay schedule.
It's a sheet, I don't know if it has off really paid here. With some.
Should be a summary.
Summerish sheet, all the way towards somewhere. It looks like. Okay, we got it.
Yeah, I would have you note that the payroll periods that we will be approving today, or will be put up for approval today are from October 15th through the 28th, October 28th through November 11th, and November 12th through November 25th, all 2018.
So moved.
Roll call.
Commissioner Juanita Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Renee Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner President Gardner.
Yes. Legal reports, bids, proposals, and contracts.
We have two professional services contracts to be presented to the board today. Both are for elevator maintenance and repair. The first is for cone ink, and it's to exceed $1,500. The second is for service sanitation ink, and it's about to exceed $8,000. So we're presenting those for approval today.
Questions or comments from board members? Then I would motion for the approval of these services contracts.
So moved.
Roll call.
If I could, just an explanation. So, the reason why these are so low as compared to other years is because in order for us to close out our contracts, pay the vendors in full, we have to extend the length of the contract to have a check cut for them. So, that's why these contracts are.
Are we up to date on paying all of our contractors for 2018?
We're pretty good. We're, so what we're having to do is, is things like this, we're having to create, like if we have a payment that we had to pay from December, what we have to do is create another purchase order because those purchase orders have been closed out by Finance. And the contracts like these that we have expire as of December 31st. So in order to make sure that they're paid out for the work that they did in 2018, some of them we've had to open additional purchase orders, and some of them we've had to amend contracts, thank you.
That completes the report.
Okay, these are amended contracts.
Right.
To cover costs from 2018.
Yes.
So these contractors are fully satisfied now?
For 2018.
For 2018.
They will be once, once this approved.
I see.
Previous question? Roll call.
Commissioner Juanita Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Renee Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner President Dwight Gardner.
Yes. Administrative reports. All right, Alicia Marquette.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Right now I have no concerns for Marquette. The action items are, we are seeking permission to put out a request for a proposal for the concession stand for the summer of 2019.
So, in regards to the RFP, as you all know, we did the concession stand last year. Moderately okay, but didn't get the results that we wanted. We'll have to get the numbers to you all exactly, but I know if we broke even, which I don't think we did, it just didn't turn out to be what we thought it would be. And so, last year, we kind of had to operate it because we put out the RFP, we had a few interested parties, but nobody actually submitted a proposal. And then rather have the concession stand sitting vacant, you know, with the guidance of Reverend Gardner, and, you know, we all put our heads together to come up with a plan that we thought would be sufficient to operate it last summer. If we have to do it again this summer, so be it, we kind of know what to do, what not to do, but we'd like to open it up. There's been quite a bit of interest, getting inquiries for people to operate the facility. And so, it's just a matter of just exploring our options.
Okay, my only, my only thought about, about it is that for the three years before we operated ourselves, we made no money. As a matter of fact, we, we lost money. That people who signed contracts with us left owing us significant amounts of money.
Yes.
And so, if we in fact broke even, or anywhere close to that, operating on ourselves this year, we did better than we had done the three years, the three previous years. I, I am not opposed to sending out an RFP. However, if, if in our first trial and error year, we learned what we could do better, then I, I'm of the mind that we're actually in a position to, to proceed in that realm. One of my hopes was that the concession stand could be a way of how we provided summer employment for a couple of young people, several young people from our city during the summer. So I haven't let go of that. I don't have a problem with the sending out the RFP, but I'm not yet committed to moving in that direction.
I understand.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Marquette has two parts and custodian positions available. All applicants are asked to please submit your applications to the City of Gary Human Resources Department. Some of our triumphs and thanks are Sunday, January 27th, 2019, which is this coming up Sunday. Marquette will be participating in the Lucky Bride Writer Show in New Buffalo, New Buffalo, Michigan, Indiana as a vendor. This would expose us to hundreds of potential clients that have not heard of us or simply have forgotten about us. We did a 10 writer show last year, and we did book two weddings off of attending that writer show, which was equivalent to about $7,600. So they, it is effective to attend these type of events. Since the approval of the Ballroom Special, which was January 9th, we are happy to report we have booked one event so far. We are three weeks away from our Superhero and Princess Brunch. There are still opportunities for anyone willing to sponsor a child for $32 or participate in this action-packed event. It will be a day of fun and laughter for children 12 and under. Please plan to attend or become a sponsor.
Questions or comments? About Marquette? Thank you. Dr. Smith, Dr. Campbell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good mornings, everyone. Reminder about American Heart Association Month coming up in February. The lovely ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority will be hosting a Healthy Heart Day, where they will be participating in doing blood pressures here in our lobby. They also have a Healthy Heart Zumba Day. And so that will be, again, February the 1st, which would be on a Friday, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Also, the ladies of Sigma Gamma Rho, they will be hosting an event for American Heart Month Association as well. That will be February the 9th, that's on a Saturday. And they will partake in an activity with blood pressures as well, and they will utilize the track upstairs from 8:00 AM until about 10:00 AM. And that will be February the 9th on a Saturday. We're also going to host here at the Hudson Campbell. It's open to the public, a Healthy Heart Day every Wednesday during the month of February from 6 to 8, there'll be cardio. And so it's open to the public, we're asking for everyone to come out and partake. If anyone is interested in booking any type of event for American Heart Association Month, you can give us a call at 886-2814 here at the Hudson Campbell, if you're interested in booking in the event as well. We have a new senior activity program with our senior activity leader, Ms. Glenda Clark. She's our senior coordinator here for Silver Sneakers, and she's also hosting a new class for Senior Stretch Day, and that just kicked off this past Friday, and it was a wonderful success. She is hosting that class every Friday here at our facility in the aerobic room, starting at 10:00 AM. And it is open to the public, and it is free for seniors. And I believe she said the age starts at 50. So if we have anyone that's interested, please let, spread the word for Ms. Glenda as she's kicking off her new class. Update on the prospective basketball league that I discussed with you all last board meeting. I had an opportunity, I was very honored to be able to sit down and have a conversation briefly with Ms. Angela Hamlin Blakely. And I shared with her the vision that we have, and she's on board with that. And so, she's, she has a lot of commitments in the water right now. So we're looking to hopefully try to spearhead something in the spring after bidding season is over with Coach Terrell, and we're all in the midst of sitting down at the table having talks about it. So there's definitely a market for it, and we're looking to hopefully start that up as a pilot in the spring. With our update, just a brief update on renovation, our graphics wall. I believe we have four graphics now. Last graphic that we were looking to have, which is a more clear picture now, was for Ms. Angela Hamlin Blakely. So we have all four images now, so we're looking to go ahead and complete the graphics of all. Is that correct, Secretary? Yep. And that's all we have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don isn't here, but I can, I can give somewhat of an update on his behalf. I know last time we talked about the pump house and the sense of urgency and making sure that it gets replaced, and the pump house mechanisms are already placed. By the time spring hits, as of our last, we, as of last week actually, I had a conversation with our insurance provider. An adjuster was supposed to have, well, did come out the week before last, to give us an estimate on the amount of damages done. The step we're at now is they, we're trying to evaluate if any of the equipment in the pump house is any good, but we are not going to go in there because of the state of the building itself. Looks like it's kind of holding on by a thread, so we're trying to, trying to navigate that one because we don't want to take the risk of any of our people going inside the building that looks like it may collapse at any moment. So right now, we're working through that to see if any of the equipment is repairable or worth anything, but it's a situation, I don't want to put any of our staff in by going inside.
Why, why haven't we torn it down? I mean, if, if that part of the evaluation has been done, but I mean, as it relates to insurance, if that part of the evaluation of the property has been done, it's smaller than a one-car garage. It's, it's barely a shed. And, and I would, I would think that, you know, that's a, that's a 30-minute teardown. A one-hour teardown, load it up, and haul it away.
It should be, I, I think it's gonna be a little bit more, little bit more difficult than that because we don't want to tear up any of the mechanisms inside. But I think your point is very well taken. The thing for us is, we don't want to move too soon because this is the second time that they've sent out an adjuster to assess the damage. And so, I don't know what the, we don't have that number back yet of what the assessment is, but we don't want to move too soon and tear anything down, and they haven't done whatever evaluation they need to. So, continual work in progress with the insurance company to make sure that everything is done on their end and that, you know, there's a sense of urgency for us to have this up and ready by the time the spring hits.
So how likely is that, based on what you've told us? Because I mean, the spring will be here in three months.
Right. The conversations I've had with the insurance provider are positive. Everything else has been done. So the only thing that we're waiting on is just the evaluation from the insurance adjuster. Then you can get a check in hand, and then we go around the process of selecting a vendor to put everything back together. It would be good if we could kind of do that simultaneously. The only, the only problem is, we don't really have a number. I don't know what the amount of money we'll be getting is yet. And so, I can't really move until we get that report from the adjuster. So that's, that's kind of the last thing we're waiting on, and then we can kind of go from there.
Can we determine from the adjuster what their other inspection needs are? Because based on what you're saying, if we, if we're not going in the building to look at pumps and, and other equipment, they, they haven't been in the building either? So how then, how can they give us a, a realistic assessment of the situation if they haven't been in the building?
That I don't know yet because I haven't seen, I'm waiting on that documentation to come forward. And so, right now, we're just kind of in a wait, until that happens. Like I said, there was some correspondence last week with the insurance provider. She did, she's been on a regular basis providing me updates on where they are in the process. It's just I haven't heard anything this week as, as far as where they are. We're just still kind of waiting on it.
What's taking so long?
So the initial.
This is almost been, literally six months?
Three months. No, it's, it's happened in, I think it was October 3rd, if I'm not mistaken. The initial, the initial issue was determining whose insurance was going to be covered. Because one of the things that, there was some confusion about was, was this under the Parks Department or was it the Sanitary District? Because the Sanitary District helps to kind of maintain the pumps because it's, it's also in their best interests as well. So once we determined kind of whose insurance was covering it, insurance adjuster was sent out, then the insurance, that evaluation from the insurance adjuster, the cost to, to put us back together, in the opinion of the insurance folks, was way too high. And it wouldn't have covered what we needed to be done. So they decided to send somebody else out again to do a second evaluation, to determine what the, the cost of damages was. Because the number they put out there well exceeded what our policy provided for us to be able to get. What, what even costs. And so now.
So, let me ask you this question. The policy numbers should be based on what it would take. To, to make us whole, to repair what was torn up, whatever that number looks like. Because ultimately, the, the driver of the vehicle is, is, is responsible. I mean, you know, and I know there are supposedly limits to what their insurance coverage is. Here is my, here is my, here is my concern. We have a golf course that is presently 50% underwater. We have no mechanism in place even to remove the water from the golf course. And that's not even getting to how we will be able to again water the greens and, and, because all of that is part of the pump house. If, if this is strung out by lack of decision-making, by passing the buck, by can't get a definitive answer or action from a particular source, our golf course will die. Is that something? Is that something? You know, there, there are multi-million and multi-billion dollar decisions that are made with less challenge than, than what it is we're facing. And we need some answers, but even more than that, we need action. And I'm hoping that that can occur in the next couple of weeks. So, so my, my challenge is that when we come together for our next meeting in two weeks, that there'll be some, you know, if you can't go in the pump house because it's torn up, then tear it down. I mean, you know, we don't have to tear up what's in it, to tear it, to remove the, the little shed that covered it, so remove the hazard so we can make a, a definitive investigation and a definitive decision about the equipment in the house. All right. Aquatics Manager, Christine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Simone. Okay. Good morning. Currently, I'm working on going out to all the schools, charter schools and Gary Public Schools, trying to work with the schools on teaching water safety to the younger kids and some of the older children. I want to give, enlighten the kids about the safety of the chain of survival, just in case they ever get caught in the water, of the things that need to do. Beginning next month, I'm going to start going out to the churches, schools of 504 Broadway to put out for Life Part. Going out everywhere in the city to start recruiting. Last week, choked up. Last week, we had a meeting with the Boys and Girls Club, American Red Cross, Jack and Jill. We're trying to make the swim program much bigger than we did last year, trying to reach out. And we have people who want to volunteer to try to get the program, or swim lessons, get the word out. They want to, you know, help out, see what they can do to get more kids to come out, to actually, you know, since we have such large body of water, to get more people out to come out and get an understanding of swimming. You know, this area used to be real big on swimming. So we're just really trying to get the word out, get people to want to come out and swim, utilize our parks, utilize our pools and splash pads, and also get adults to come out. And I'll teach water safety, not actually in the water, but give them the understanding because sometimes the reason the children don't come out is because the parents are scared for, you know, they have some kind of traumatic, something happened in their past, or they were self-taught of just being scared of the water. So you just kind of work with the parents, have a couple of classes. It's not really long, like 30 minutes of understanding the water, that, you know, there will be more, and, you know, listen to bring their kids out.
Okay. Anyone else?
That's it?
Thank you. Youth Services, Ken Adellosa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are still running our after-school program at Reed Nature Park, Monday through Thursday, 3 to 6. You'd like to register your kid or sign here, I'm sorry, not kid, child. You can call 881-5270, or you can come up to 455 Massachusetts Street, and we'll get that paperwork filled out for you. We are also looking for members for our youth council, or any referrals or recommendations for any youth that are interested in civic engagement. They also, we have three remaining members, and those members will attend a empowerment training on February 16th in Bloomington. So we'll be going to Bloomington on February 16th, it's an all-day trip, and we'll, we won't do an overnight. We'll drive down in the morning and then we'll come back. Our, the completion of our implementation grant was extended, today is our deadline. I've been working on that over the last few days. So we should have everything ready to go by end of business day-to-day to turn that in. And again, the planning for the summer recreation, I've talked with the superintendent in regards to how many sites we will actually have this year versus the sites that we had last year. And that is because of the lack of training and employees we were able to have last year that caused us to have our administrative review. We are still waiting for those results to come back, we haven't received them back from the state yet, so we're still waiting on that. Last I heard, they said if they had questions, they'd let us know. But do you know the training is in April, we will have to attend that training. They do try to make it local within two to three hours driving distance, but we will have to attend that. It is a free training, I, I think it's great that we have to go because we're being trained by the Department of Education. So we know, we know what we're supposed to do, so that's a great thing. And that is all we have.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have a question, Ms. Adellosa. And it's in regards to the connecting children's to nature grant. What, how is the plan coming together for the additional $50,000 that we may qualify for?
So, we have, and I don't have that with me right now, but we do have a budget. It's kind of skeleton budget right now that we've set out. We want to do, of course, we want to do some hiring, so we want to hire some people. But more of the funding will go towards taking the kids, making sure that they have transportation to different places. One of the things that we noticed is that we have a lot of nature centers around this area, but our children don't have access to those, like the Douglas Center, to go over to the museum, different things like that. They don't have. Like the Douglas Center, um, to go over to the museum, different things like that, they don't have access. So we want to be a source that will be able to do that, and that is something that we do plan to offer once a month. On a Saturday, we'll take a group of kids to different type of, um, nature, nature centers so that they can get that experience. Um, the other is for curriculum. Our main focus is going to be educating our youth in this community on our native, the, the plants and things that are native to, uh, Gary. The plants, the butterfly gardens and things like that. So what we want to do is we want to empower them. What we say is that we're, uh, doing youth leadership, so we're doing youth leaders. So we empower them and then next year, they can come back and then they can teach you. Or they can come onto our after-school program and then they can teach those younger kids the different things about nature. But the main goal is one of the things that we've realized that may not be an issue, issue in other cities, is our kids just don't go outside. So when you say nature, for some of our kids, nature is literally going outside, just walking outside, maybe playing some basketball, and I'm not saying basketball because that's what everybody does, but just going outside and playing in the elements. That's something that the kids in our community don't do as much anymore. And so once we can get them outside, then we can get them to invest in going through some of our nature trails, learning about some of the things we, you know, sometimes we have a hard time getting them to come to recreation. They'll come, but they want to stay in the building, they don't want to come out. So we had to figure out what is nature. It could be outdoors, just outdoors, and then what are you doing when you come outdoors, so.
I, I just wanted to make sure you had an adequate plan in place-
Yes.
-to get to it.
Yes, and so we had a meeting with, um, um, we were able to attend the cabinet meeting. So we were looking for policies that were in place to kind of connect children with nature. We had some, some different departments that had funding. We didn't have any, uh, policies solidified to say, yes, this is how we're going to connect children with nature, this is what we're going to do with nature. So that's something that during, uh, during the next three years of this grant that we're going to work on with the policy. Because we have a beautiful natural resources that are here, that as a child we just took for granted, that our kids are not taking for granted anymore. So that's one of the things that we'll be working on as well, trying to get other people to help us.
The good thing for us is, and this is something that Kiana's been working on, is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are programs that already exist, it's just a matter of us connecting the kids to these programs that already exist. And that's kind of the direction, um, Kiana's taken, even with Youth Services Bureau. Uh, like, we can't necessarily be everything to everybody. But if we have a good idea of what everybody is doing, at least we have a good id, good way of connecting you, uh, connecting youth to what it is that they're doing. Any other questions?
Does Youth Services Bureau have a van or transportation?
We have that big rear van.
Okay, great, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, we have a five-page document that's maybe, um, reduce to three pages front and back. So I won't go over the whole, the whole thing as far as the year-end, year-end review is concerned. But I do want to highlight, um, a few, few good, few not-so-good things, um, that are, that are highlighted in the report. Couple of wins for us, um, the Hudson Campbell renovations, um, without a question are, are a win for us. We're, we're seeing a net tip in the revenue as a result of it, um, and it's not even completed yet. People, when they walk inside the facility, are oftentimes shocked at as far as what is that they, that they see. And hopefully really soon, um, the outside of the building will match what's inside the building. Uh, but so far, so good on, on the renovations. Um, another huge win for us was the carry-in, carry-out policy. Um, was met with a, um, a ton of pushback from folks, um, who were questioning why we would remove the garbage cans from the shoreline and put them at the entrances. But, um, I have to say that it was a good success. We had a lot of assistance from, um, the Miller Community, friends of Marquette, Shoreline Committee. Those folks helped us a ton, we had a lot of volunteers, a lot of cleanup efforts that assisted towards that as well. But overall, we did see a shift in the way that people, uh, behave on the shoreline as it relates to their waste. There's still a, a, a lot of ways to go. Um, we're looking to, um, to continue to promote the policy, but I have to say it was a, it's a pretty good success. How Park, the renovation of How Park, uh, has started, so the demolition of the pavilion has gotten underway. And so that process has started, the actual splash pad construction and the basketball court renovations will begin, uh, late on in the year when the, when the weather improves. So I have to say that was, that one, uh, is good as well. And Kiana just talked about, um, tripsy and as far as cities connecting children to nature. This is a huge endeavor, um, something that, uh, was undertaken in the last year. And this is a, this is part of, part of the bigger, broader plan. Ultimately, we hope that this, uh, program will increase usage in our parks, um, increase the viability of our parks. And so, uh, really excited. Last thing, I, I do want to mention is the, another good thing is the, um, parking revenue. Uh, we saw an increase, um, in twenty eighteen, uh, seventeen thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and fifteen cents. Not exactly sure what fifteen cents comes from, uh, but seventeen thousand nine hundred sixty dollars in the amount of revenue that we collected from twenty seventeen. And so, um, overall, um, overall good job by, um, the Marquette staff as far as getting adequately trained folks in, uh, who were responsible, who did their job on an everyday, regular basis. And as a result, we can see the, uh, the fruits of that. Uh, things to work on. I have to be honest, I, I, I think our efficiency, our efficiency could get better, um, as a department. And, and what I mean by that is, I think there are, there are times, um, let's be honest, we don't have everything that we need, and I don't think any department is ever going to have everything they need. But, um, for the amount of properties that we have to maintain, eight groundskeepers, eight seasonal groundskeepers and two full-time, um, maintenance people isn't enough. It's nowhere near enough. And so what that means to us is, um, every opportunity we get, we have to take full advantage of. We don't have any time to waste, um, we don't have any time to, uh, we're just, the, time is not a resource that is on our side. It's not on any of our side, but it's definitely not on, on our side. And so any opportunity that we have as far as maintenance is concerned, we have to take full advantage of it. So what I mean by that is, um, where opportunity, where opportunities exist to get started earlier in the season, uh, we have to take, we have to take that opportunity. When they're, when it's late in the season and we can do maintenance that will help us and assist us in the beginning of the season, we absolutely have to do that. When things start overgrowing around the parks, not necessarily in the parks, but around the parks, um, that make it aesthetically unpleasant, that's something that we have to address very early in the season. Because by the time the summer gets around, you start hiring your folks, it's already too late. So from an efficiency standpoint, uh, that's something that I'm going to drive real hard. Uh, with the limited resources we have, it's, it's crucial for us to not waste any time, any opportunities we have, uh, from a maintenance perspective.
Can I, sure. You are, you are absolutely right that we have neither the manpower nor the equipment to maintain fifty-seven parks in the city of Gary. That's the equivalent of one park per mile. Gary is fifty-six miles and its circumference, that's, that's the equivalent of one park per mile. And yet, the citizens of Gary deserve, uh, places where they can go in our community, uh, to enjoy the outdoors, to enjoy nature, to enjoy the things that parks present. Here is what I would like to see happen, we, we discussed it and I'm waiting, uh, on some kind of report. Uh, I, I would like for two parks in every district to be identified. That, that, that there'd be two parks in every district that be identified, and then we focus our efforts on giving those parks the best possible service we can. And then we market and advertise to the community where these locations are. Uh, that, if, if we can do that, then in every district, every district will have two well-kept, well-maintained, well-clean, uh, places for families to gather and children to play. And, and, and if we can do that as a, as a foundation for, uh, uh, the future, I think we will go a long way. Uh, it, we, we have to simply, uh, change the way things are done if we're going to be successful. And it starts with focusing, literally laser focusing our intent and our resources and our ma, manpower to get the most bang for the buck. And so, um, you know, I'm hoping that by our next meeting, we can have identified those two parks in every district. That's what we want to start with. That we are going to, uh, pump in the resources that we have and the manpower that we have as early as possible. And then, and then again, market and advertise those locations to our citizens so they know in my district, I can go to this park, that park is going to be clean, well-kept, manicured, uh, and my family and friends and my children, uh, can enjoy them. And, and then we will go from there. And we won't apologize that the result of that is that there may be forty-nine parks that are receiving little or any, um, a, any, any attention, uh, right? Because we have to do, we, we're going to make sure we give them a couple of places where they can go, right? And until, uh, we have gotten over that hump across the river or times have gotten better, we're going to focus and laser, uh, our resources in those areas where we can be successful.
Couple of other things that, that I think definitely needs improvement, and this is on me, and I am, I've been striking out at this one, but just alternative funding sources as far as applying for grants. I've had a transformation, it's, it's a, it's a process where I'm learning. The grant applications are challenging at times, but they're not impossible. I'm going to have to do a better job of when we don't get these funding sources, reaching out to these funding sources and finding out what areas I was lacking in, why, why didn't we receive those? And then make adjustments, um, as those things, as that feedback comes in. But, uh, I've made several attempts and, you know, everybody's always satisfied with effort, but effort means nothing if you don't get any, any results, in my opinion. Uh, so it's, it's an area that I've got to keep evolving in until I get this thing right. Because again, we just talked about it, you know, we don't, we don't have an abundance of resources. So it's my job to make sure that, uh, our people have what they need. And so this is, this is part of my responsibility. Uh, and so it's something I'm going to continue to work at. As far as opportunities for growth or improvement, I talked about efficiency already, so. Uh, the only thing I would add as far as efficiency is there are opportunities to utilize technology, data in order to do so. So you, you were talking about identifying parks. Well, we know, um, there is data that shows the density of the population, where people live, where the largest percentage of the populations are. And so what we can do is tailor our, our maintenance efforts or any marketing efforts to the people where they are exactly. As far as pool maintenance, uh, one of the things I think Christine did an excellent job, uh, is not only educating herself, but educating me on the importance, importance of it. For whatever reason, um, things just weren't done on a regular routine maintenance. We have a better understanding of that, and I think in the long run, that'll end up costing us less resources uh, because we now understand, understand what it takes in order to make sure that, um, we maintain things on a regular basis so they don't break down at some point in the season, cost us more money. Uh, we have more complaints from the residents as a result of it. So I think the hard-working dedication that she put in, uh, during the summer will, will eventually pay off. Another area I think we can improve in is training for, for some of our groundskeepers. Um, not only training as it relates to the equipment, I think they, they did a pretty good job of, um, any groundskeepers before they got on a riding mower or use any of the hand equipment. They spent a couple of days out at Gleason with Don, um, kind of went through a, a course to make sure that they were adequately prepared to mow. Once they got the okay from them, then we put them out. So I think in that respect, we're fine. But, um, I think about Reed Park, and, you know, we all cringe when it comes to Reed Park. Uh, but one of the things that with Reed Park is, um, I don't think all of us have a really, really thorough understanding of the functions of the park and the, and the, Kiana just mentioned the native plants and the purpose of them. And a lot of them look like weeds, and on a regular basis, I would probably be pulling them up. But they're not, they're native plants that serve a purpose. And so, um, there are some trainings that are coming up that, that won't cost us a dime, that we can get our crew in, that would help them understand how to maintain these plants, what the purpose of them at is and how important they are. So that way, we can differentiate the weeds from the plants, and aesthetically, we can give our parks a much better look. And the last thing I, I think that we have an opportunity to capitalize on is, um, this is a conversation we started and, and it'll be ongoing, is just the parking pay station at Concession Stand and on Marquette Drive. It is, there is a revenue source that we can tap into, that we can then reinvest back into the park itself, um, to make sure that we're giving a better product, uh, to visitors and guests and the residents in that area that'll be up there as well. So, um, you have it, it's, it's pretty extensive, so I won't go over all of it. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. Questions of this staff of boardrooms?
I've, I've taken a look at this, and I think it would be better addressed during an executive session at some point.
Okay, uh, two other things, a DNR update. So many of you know, we've been out of compliance with DNR each fifteen years because of the development of MC Bennett Park, which is now County Market. And so, um, last Tuesday, the mayor and I met with, um, some of the leadership of Indiana DN, uh, Indiana's DNR Department. We've had really good dialogue with them as far as what is going to take for us to, to get back in, in the good graces of DNR. And so I'm, I'm happy to report that we finally have specifics, I think I emailed it to you all, uh, last night, one of the, the emails that I got from one of the, um, employees of DNR. It appears as if our issue with non-compliance, we might not necessarily be in non-compliance because we haven't done what it takes in order to get out of it. I think, um, Lori, uh, did a lot of legwork to, to get us in compliance. And I think there just were I's dotted and T's that weren't crossed. So there's documentation that needs to support the work that she did, that she did, that we need to get to them. And then there may be an additional property, according to the email, um, there's an additional fifty-three thousand dollars property that we need to replace, um, in the, in, in order to make sure that we're in compliance to match what was done with MC Bennett Park. And so, uh, there are some properties that are listed there, and it may be that we actually own those properties. So now it's kind of my job to, to take the ball, to identify those properties, to see if we actually own them, and then provide evidence. actually own them, and then provide evidence to DNR in order to do so. But we've had a really good dialogue with them, and I really appreciate them taking the time out of their days to meet with us. And it looks like we might be coming out of that, out of the woods with them, for lack of a better word, really soon.
Okay. Let me, for a little information on that. Redevelopment selected that property on Twenty-Fifth Avenue for development into the shopping. And so exercised the city privilege of eminent domain to make, to take that park property and turn it into that area. There were three acres of, if I'm not mistaken, wetland. That was the key issue, was that. It was wetlands. And there are both federal and state legislation rules in place about how you deal with wetland. And at that time, if you repurposed the wetland, then you had to acquire the same amount of property in the same kind at some other location. All right? So redevelopment took that area, they developed it, but they never acquired the three acres of wetland that they used, and that's how we wound up out of compliance. It wasn't anything specific done by the park department or the park board that put us out of compliance with the Department of Natural Resources. It was the decision by redevelopment to develop MC Bennett Park into something other than a park and not replace those three acres of wetland. And the reason I'm aware of that is that I worked with Lori, went to some meetings with Lori. That was what we were trying to do, but every time, it always came back to, you still have to supply the area, the wetland that you repurposed, you've got to resupply that acreage. And that has been, that has to be done through redevelopment and not through the park department. We don't have the resources to do that.
As far as acquiring the land.
Acquiring that land. And at which time, that would almost alleviate the situation. But at least I'm glad that there is some more moving on.
Right. So, yeah, that's where we are, and I'll continue to update you all as I progress through the steps and hopefully we're there, we're there really soon.
Does it look like you'll be able to do something with that this year?
Oh, yeah. As far as, it may be that we are, like I said, it may be that we're in compliance, it's just we haven't provided them the necessary documentation so they have it on their books that we do. And so that's, it's just information that I have to verify in order to do so.
And then once we do verify that, we'll be eligible for the grants? Because they have a vast amount of money.
Yes.
And we really could use that.
Absolutely. We missed out on well over a million dollars.
So why are we doing that? We need to actually just, with a sense of urgency? Get the money.
That's priority A, B, and C right now. But I do just want to offer, just so the public knows, there are other parks as well, they provided me a list of other parks that we absolutely cannot touch unless we do the same process. Off the top of my head, I can't remember, Hatcher, Jackson, Tollesston, I think Reed was on there. So there can be no privatization of those unless you replace it with property of equal or greater value.
So make sure we have a list of those?
I do.
And let's not touch those?
I do.
Okay? So we won't go out of compliance again?
I do. I have the list. They provided it to me, so. So I'll continue to update you all as things progress. Last thing I wanted to announce is in May, I will be attending a conference in Philadelphia to get my green infrastructure certification training. It is a scholarship that I received after applying with National Recreation Parks Association, so for all intents and purposes, it's free. They cover all the expenses for me to get this. For the public's knowledge, green infrastructure for the sense of time is just creating aesthetically pleasing projects that help to manage the amount of storm water that's collected on the park. And so it's an opportunity for us to accomplish two goals, to reduce the amount of storm water and also improve the quality and the look of parks. As I've looked around and been in different conferences, this is one of the newer, it's not newer things, but it's one of the things that's being talked about a lot as far as green infrastructure projects and improvements. And so I'm definitely looking forward to attending the training and then bringing back the knowledge and the information I have back to the department so we can make really good decisions moving forward as it relates to the improvements of our parks.
Congratulations.
And congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Oh, you know what? There was one thing. Kamisha asked for the permission to do an RFP. I think that needs your board approval, so if we could get you all's approval to start to advertise it, we'd appreciate it.
And I'll entertain a motion that we would approve the advertising of an RFP for Market Park concessions.
Someone.
Roll call.
Commissioner Juanita Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Renee Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner President Dwight Goffin.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have one individual sign up to speak, Mr. Ken Williams. Yes, sir.
Yes. I apologize. Could I sit down?
Sure.
I'm come from back surgery, and it's a little hard for me to stand. Thank you for allowing me to be here this morning, but I'm here because of, I spoke to Linda Meadows, and I'm kind of here on behalf of Denise Williams, the singer. I'm kind of the ex-husband, best friend, spokesperson of the day, but she asked that I come, she proposes to have a Halloween party for kids over at the Tollesston Park Pavilion, and I think it's like from five to eight or something. And she, pretty much in keeping with what she wants to do in terms of giving back to Gary a little bit, she wants to do this. And so Linda asked that I come this morning, you know, just to let you know what she's planning to do. Now, whether this is going to be an annual thing or not, I don't know all of that, but right now, I know that this is something that she feels deeply about and something that she would like to do. I'm going to go speak to Linda afterwards. I spoke to her yesterday about securing the Tollesston Park Pavilion so that she could, so we would have that done already. So I'm here just to say, hey, you know, this is something that she'll be doing, coming down the road here in October. If anybody has any questions and wants to get in contact with her, they can go through me. My phone number is area code three oh nine, two three one, oh five six four.
Here's what I would like to do. We do a citywide harvest festival during the traditional Halloween season, all at one place and one location. Last couple of years, it has been greatly successful, and it is, it is done by Youth Services Bureau, I believe, along with Kamisha from Marquette. Is that right?
Yeah, it's basically the whole city, but yeah, it's.
The trunk or tree?
Yeah, the trunk or tree is a citywide effort, so mostly all the city departments.
Okay. So our representative would be Mr. Loza or Kamisha?
It could be one of three of us. Kayana, Kamisha, or myself.
Okay. I'm going to, Kayana, raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
The young lady behind you?
Hi. Hello.
How you doing?
I'm going to ask that you would work with her. She is the director of Youth Services in the city of Gary. And again, I said, we have a citywide thing where all departments participate and see if she can be the liaison between your interests and the city's interests, and we'll see what we can work.
All right.
So I'm going to ask you guys to exchange contact.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, sir. Come right in.
Okay. You know, I would like to see you guys get up and running now for that park, the golf course, you know. It takes quite a while to, you know, send out requests for quotations. I would like for you to act as if it was a total loss. Get the quotes right now. You know, I don't want to see them in April or May. This is, a project like this takes quite a bit of time. It's just not overnight. You got to be up and running now, you know. When you guys get the checks from any place, it's time to open up. It takes at least a couple of months to get pumps and things like that, but you guys got to be up and running, you know, right now, because if you wait, everybody's going to be talking about June or July, that has to be too late.
Well, I thank you for your support, and you would find that we're in total agreement, at least I am, with the necessity of urgency.
Yes, it is. Yesterday, not today.
Right.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments from board members? I do want to express that the Ecumenical Committee of Northwest Indiana held its fiftieth annual Martin of the King Day celebration Monday of this week. It was held at the New Mount Morave Baptist Church in Gary, Indiana. It was a packed house and a rousing success. So I was very pleased about that. Gary was celebrating the life and legacy of Martin of the King almost twenty years before it was a federal holiday. And it became a federal holiday because of the efforts of our own Congresswoman Katie Hall. And so we continue.